Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Canofla. Any discussion?
As President, Lori, we've done this in the past where like Little Falls Care Center and
Correct, we've done this numerous times, yes, yes. And again, there's no obligation on the city to make any of the payments. It doesn't account towards our debt. It's just an IRS requirement that each community in which they are doing improvements or have done improvements in our refinancing debt, that we hold a public hearing for them to refinance or issue the debt.
So it would just give somebody an opportunity to come speak about it if they chose?
Correct.
Mr. President, just curiosity, what if we didn't adopt it? Would it hold up the whole project or?
Yes, yes.
One community?
Yes, yes.
Mr. President, sorry, Lori, everything you're saying, I agree with. Can you explain to me the purpose of having to go through this pomp and circumstance, basically? I mean, this is, what's the point?
I honestly don't know. I just know that the IRS requires at any time that a company, and we've done this with the, years ago with the power company, with Minnesota Power, if they wanted to issue industrial revenue bonds through any healthcare, whether it's the hospital, the Little Falls Healthcare, any of those types of facilities, when they have many facilities throughout and they're doing improvements or they're refinancing debt, it's a requirement that the IRS says they have to go through. And I'm, you know, the public hearing would allow people in the community to come in and express their opinions, which, you know, for us, for as far as the city, we have no obligation to pay the debt or to do anything.
We're not issuing the bonds or incurring debt? They are, I just don't.
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay, so we're not going to fix it?
So we're the vehicle.
I get it, I'm just really.
It's the IRS, it doesn't make sense.
And our only cost is to advertise for a public hearing?
It's not, they reimburse us for that. So we keep, any legal fees we incur and the cost to do the publication, we will send them an invoice and they'll reimburse us for that.
About our office, do we get reimbursed for time?
It doesn't take a ton of time.
Okay.
People like me are taking more of your time than.
I just send it to the attorneys, make sure it's okay, they send it back and say yea or nay and so, but we bill them for the attorney's time that, you know, they spend doing this and looking it over.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Gouschek?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Carries.
Lettings, administration workspaces, furniture, KI, Green Bay, Wisconsin, award. Lori.
So we budgeted $25,000 for four workspaces or workstations for the administration staff. The, currently the desks we have, they're probably 25 years old, they're looking in pretty rough shape, pretty squeaky, and it's like that chalk on the chalkboard, fingers on the chalkboard thing when I open my drawer, my desk drawer. Anyhow, we looked at various options for new desk furniture. We, all of us in the office are, would like to have the adjustable kind where you can sit or stand, I think just better for us to be able to move around and do some things. So we looked at the state bid and we also looked at the Sourcewell bid. We did budget 25,000 for four workstations. Since we've added staff, we're actually going to get five workstations. The total cost, including the chairs, couple of file cabinets that go with them, is just under 29,000. It's 28,798.40 from off of the state bid and through Sourcewell, it's 28,220. So we would like to purchase off of the Sourcewell bid at the 28,220 and then we will get a rebate back from that as well.
Because it's Sourcewell?
Correct.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to award and approve the administration workspaces recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Councilmember Liljigrin. Any discussion?
Mr. President, just for clarification, these will be owned by the city and not by the individuals?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yep.
Well, otherwise I couldn't vote.
Yes, yes, no, the city owns them.
Mr. President, I, I don't know if you've, Lori, if you've seen these adjustable desks in action. We have a few in one of the offices of my employer and people rave about them. Productivity goes up, people need to stand, they stand and they just keep going and they're pretty neat.
Yeah, we went over to the county because they got all new office furniture over there with their expansion, so we went over and looked at theirs and, yeah, they have, some one side or both sides are adjustable. They love them. And I just know for myself, there's some days that I'm at my desk a lot and there's other days where I'm up and down and up and down and my keyboard's constantly in the way and I usually have it sitting on my lap trying to type and, yeah, so I think this will be just a huge, huge plus for us.
Mr. President, is there accommodations for adjusting your computer heights?
Right, so it's on, yes, yes, yeah.
That's a good thing.
We don't have to have boxes and books.
We have been upgrading monitors as well along the way. More staff are moving to dual monitors and most of them have about a foot adjustment within the monitor stand alone, too.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Open Government Budget Builder Planning and Renewal, Open Government Software, Redwood City, California, award approved. John.
Thank you, Council President. This is to renew and initiate software, software as a service through OpenGov. This, the, we currently have their reporting and transparency modules that we, that will expire at the end of this year. This would renew those modules as well as add for the final six months of this year and with the next four-year contract, the Budget Builder and Workforce Planning modules, as well as approve the cost for implementation of those two new modules that we would be looking to add. OpenGov is a, is a web-based software platform that integrates with financial systems for different governments. It integrates currently with our ENCODE software very well. We've been using it, I've been using it greatly on the reporting, with the reporting module that we use, I use that to build out a lot of the budget work that we have. The budgeting module does all of the work that I'm doing on Excel within, within their module, but it also makes it accessible to all the department heads that have input or information that they need to be putting into their, into the budgets as part of the budget process. It really, as well as with that input, there's tracking and approvals. So there's an audit tracking form, so anybody, any user that's logged into the account makes those changes into the budget. There's an audit tracking on that and as well as an approval mechanism so that those changes are notified to the, to the final approval user, which would be Lori or myself, and before we finalize that and then bring that to the council for approvals. We're interested if we, if we do move forward with this, we are looking forward to getting started soon so that we could be utilizing this, get the training on it, be utilizing it for the current budget season, which will be starting very soon. Typically, we get out our budget forms in July and the way we've done that in the past, we hand out a printed worksheet, printed budget worksheet that's developed by the ENCODE software right now and hand those out to employees to fill in manually. After that, changes can be, you know, come back to Lori or myself if we have any changes, but there's no, you know, systematic auditing, tracking of what those, those changes are going to be. And it's a really, I would call, one-sided process where those department heads don't have a lot of interaction and feedback or ownership of those budgets as after they've been submitted. So I think this, for us, is the, is a great step moving forward. If not this, we would be looking to implement something like it, either with our Excel program. Now we have Office 365 programs because before it would be nearly impossible to be sending out an Excel spreadsheet of all of those files and getting six or seven of them returned back in different formats and not a very, very good two-way communication on it. So the work that I've done in OpenGov and the systems that I've seen, it's a very easy program to learn to use and it's very, it's very in-depth in terms of the capacities that it has. On top of that, the workforce planning piece is a, is a really interesting and neat model as one of the, one of the key things in the presentation that we saw that attracted me to it because it really builds up the total cost of an employee, not just when we're looking at employees, what the salary impacts and changes to it could be as we negotiate those contracts, but what are their, you know, tax implications, what are their benefits that they have, not just life and, or health insurance, but life insurance. Union, unions have different, different benefit structures, so some of them have uniform allowances, others don't, do not. So it's really thorough in what that, what it can present. So I think this could be a really useful tool for us in building us, or moving us forward in terms of technology from, from a paper system into a electronic system and giving those department heads an opportunity to be much more engaged with the program, as well as receiving some renewal and renewal, renewed training on, on the services that we currently have with them, with reporting and transparency. And we will be bringing those forward and making those more, more exposed because the transparency module does give us the opportunity to share that, that information that we develop in these reports publicly, as well as give you all as council members access to that, to that report, those reports as well.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move that we award and approve the OpenGov Budget Builder Planning and Renewal.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Gouschek. Any discussion?
Yes, this doesn't take place of any existing programs you have that you can, like a cost savings, you could get rid of that program and?
No, it's, it's not offsetting, you know, an existing program. There, there is a similar module to this available from ENCODE. However, ENCODE is a per-user based, has per-user based fees. This is an organizational-wide fee. So we could set up as many users as we want to have access to the, to the Budget Builder form. With ENCODE, there's, it's, they, they charge on a per-user basis, as well as, I don't use ENCODE in any of my work. I'm, the system, the OpenGov system integrates, so it receives the information from, from ENCODE, populates it into OpenGov, and then I can view it from there. The benefit that I see of that is then I can't mess anything up on the ENCODE side. It's a one-way, one-way communication. So it's sending that information to OpenGov constantly, so anytime payroll changes and things like that are going into place, those populate into, into OpenGov, so we see the impact that it has into the budgets in real, in near-real time. So, you know, we're, we're not replacing anything, but it's giving us access and I think usability that, that is going to be much better than if we were to utilize this in, we'd have to purchase and implement it for ENCODE if we're going to do it with that. Otherwise, the, the other strategy that I would have been considering would be training everybody and do it, using a shared Excel spreadsheet through Microsoft 365. However, I, I'm a little leery of that in terms of the time it's going to take to get that system implemented and, and how it, how easily it could be utilized, as well as the potential for that audit tracking. I'm not certain, I, I haven't fully explored that, so I'm not certain as to its capabilities to do that same sort of audit tracking that I know I would, we could receive with the Budget Builder.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Old Business Equipment Donation Sponsorship Signage, Fit Trail Pine Grove Park and Zoo, postponed from 5/20/19. Approve, Greg.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. President. I reached out to Morrison County in regards to the Fit Trail after they had requested putting some additional signs up there with the, with their sponsorship. As you can see in the packet, the additional signs and the sponsorship are, there's about 10 more signs that they'd like to add to the Fit Trail that's, that's currently out there. The sponsorship is about a five-by-five logo on the bottom and the funds that they raised from the sponsorship went to pay for the actual signs, these 10 signs themselves. And so they'd like to put those in between the 10 stations that are currently out there, that exercise trail. It gives a little bit more exercise items along that trail to make it 10 to 20 different activities that they can, can do. As you can see, it's anything from, you know, walking or running to the next station, it just makes it a little bit more active through that stretch. So this evening, if the council so chooses, we are asking the council for approval on those additional 10 signs, as well as the, the sponsors that are included on that bottom of the sign, which are the proofs for the, for the signs.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve the equipment donation and sponsorship, sponsorship signage at the Pine Grove Park and Zoo.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussions?
Yes, I walked it last night. It was enough exercise just to walk it. Someday I'll try doing all the stations. But my question is, I noticed you put the boulders back. This is just going to be a walking area.
Correct, correct, yeah.
A kind of, a lot of people like to drive back there. That's the way it was many years ago and it was kind of nice just to sit in your car and take a nice cruise through there, but.
Yeah, if it was a nice cruise, I would agree with you. We had some folks that were, you know, four-wheelers and that type of stuff that were starting to, to show signs that they were going to do some damage back there, so that's why we put the boulders back again.
And it used to be a little party spot, too.
Yep.
Did you, excuse me, Mr. President, did you say that these signs were going to be placed in between?
Correct.
The stations or?
Yep.
At the, where the station begins for them to do these as they go on to the next station?
So just after the station is where it would be placed to go to the next one? Yep.
All in favor signify by saying?
Council President?
Second.
The last time we discussed this, I think Councilmember Hanson had asked the question, who approved this? Who said it was okay to put advertising in our park?
Yeah.
How did this come about? Because I still don't like the idea of individuals buying a sign and then advertising there in perpetuity for whatever the cost of the sign was.
Yeah, so what, how it went about, Morrison County got the grant for the Fit Trail signs. There was either a 10 package or a 20-station package. They got a grant for the 10 package, so that's the one that they got. And then they decided to supplement it with 10 additional signs for exercise equipment or exercise activities between the signs. And that's kind of how it started. They wanted, they wanted more signs, but they didn't have any funds to pay for it. And so the way that they would pay for it was through a sponsorship of that individual sign, and that's how it kind of came about.
So Morrison County put this up there, but it's city land.
They have not been installed yet, so they're still waiting to be meant, to be completed or made, but these are the, the proofs of the signs that they would have created and then donated to us to install.
Wow, that's, it just seems funny that the county would make a decision like that on something that they were going to put on city land and they've already gotten the sponsorships, they're ready to, you know, they just want to head with it. It seems, I don't know, I don't like the idea that there's going to be advertising on these signs.
Looks pretty minimal on the size to me.
They're real small.
It's, it's not the size, it's the principle.
Yeah.
Well, and I think we've, and it's a much larger scale, but we've got some advertising on the Otter exhibit and that's big dollars compared to, you know, what we have here. Because I agree typically, I didn't like when the schools did that, where they had it inside, like the scoreboard was sponsored for somebody, which at that time was my competition and it was for perpetuity, like you said, so it was like, okay, I'm not fond of that, but.
It's some really cheap advertising.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New Business Change Order Number One, Minnesota Department of Transportation, Knife River Corporation, Public Improvement 375, approve. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. We spoke about this a little bit at our last meeting. This is change, the official change order number one for the Trunk Highway 27 project. In a nutshell, this change order is for cleaning up the de-watering groundwater that's, that's there. So the petroleum is potentially in some of the groundwater on the, in the west side where they'll be digging. In order to clean that before it goes into the sanitary sewer, they need to run it through a filter, basically a charcoal mix, in order to get that petroleum and stuff out of the, out of the groundwater. I don't expect it to be as large as what we show here on the, on the change order. It's based on how many days they actually use this piece of equipment, but it is needed in order to, to dig through that stretch of, of the, the project with our city utilities. So tonight we are asking for approval of change order number one to be charged to Public Improvement Number 375.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the change order number one for the Minnesota Department of Transportation in Knife River.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Gouschek, second by Councilmember Storley. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Has the, Greg, has the source of the contamination been found and, and been neutralized or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Years ago, I mean, there was a gas station on every corner on the, on the west side over there. Those have since been taken care of, but the petroleum is still in, in the groundwater there. And so in order to dig through that, we have to abate that, that contamination as we, as we encounter it.
And it can be up to this amount, but if there's none in the area they're digging, they just won't use them, there won't be a charge for that day?
For that, that day, correct. I mean, there'll still be the, the mobilization to bring the equipment here and then the day charge for it, but the media inside gets used as they, they use up, as they pump water into it. So there's pockets of areas where we anticipate to find this, but then in areas that we don't find the petroleum water, we don't anticipate using it for that, for that day, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Memorandums of understanding wastewater staff. John.
Thank you, Council President. These are two memorandums of understanding for wastewater treatment employees. They're with the two different unions because they're, they're parts of each intermuni, each union, but they're effectively identical agreements. So if, if so, if you so choose, you could accept them together. What this, these memorandums will provide is, is wages for those employees. They, they've been two, the only two wastewater operators that we've had since October of last year. And during that time, they've had to be effectively on-call 24/7 during a week to respond to any alarms or service calls at the, at the plant. That's, and during that time, we had numerous holidays and various things that weren't, as they were planning their schedule for the fall, those weren't, weren't there to them. So this was a huge ask of their part beyond what was originally expected in their, in their work. And I want to applaud them for, for stepping up to the plate and, and handling that, that on-call and providing that service for us. If we, you know, if we don't do this and we, in order to, you know, give them the time off that they needed, we would have had to get the positions filled sooner or contract out for, for other services, which, you know, I really think would have been more, much more costly to us than what we're asking. So this request is to provide them for $2 per hour for the work that was outside of the hours that they worked during their periods of on-call. In, in total, it's, it's a, I would call this a small sum relative to what the, the risk would have been if they wouldn't have been able to respond to this or we would have had to, you know, contract out for, for additional services. So I do want to, I want to publicly come out and thank Brian and Matt for, for the work they did. This was a huge commitment on their part to, to do this. It was something that we, we talked about as, as the season was starting and how do we address this? You know, it was something that was brought up with the unions. It's just finally now gotten to the point where we could get it into a contract form to, for approval.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve both number one and number two.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Hanson, to improve the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees Council 65 and number two, International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Are these payments that are rears or are these things going forward?
These are, these are both passed from, from the October timeframe to, to the end of May is the first part of it, and then it's this May timeframe moving forward because that's when the new employees came on. Their, their, the on-call requirement is going to be exhausted pretty soon as these, the employees are, are being trained and be able to, to take coverage as well. So once that, once that's done, we won't be issuing any on-call pay after that with our, you know, now that we have two additional operators available to us full-time at the plant.
And these are only $2 per hour for the hours that they were on-call? Or is this in $2 above the pay that they've already received for, for their regular scheduled hours?
$2 for the, for the hours that they were, they didn't work. So, so as an on-call coverage, so an incentive to them to, to be readily available for, for any emergency calling. And then once they were there for the hours that they worked, they received the, the pay as their, their contract schedules or contracts indicate.
So it's not their regular pay plus $2, it's just the $2?
Just the $2.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance Number 18, seventh series, amend city code, chapter four, municipal and public utilities, section 4.20, cross-connection control. Introduce, Greg.
Good evening, Mr. President. As you stated, this is ordinance number 18. This is just an introduction this evening, but I'll kind of go through what ordinance number 18 pertains to. It's basically cross-connections within the city's water system. Currently in our city code, we do not allow cross-connection. So if you've got a well and city water, you cannot, to connect those two together just because of the potential for cross-contamination. We do have some instances mainly in, like fire protection services where they've got the water, city water supply coming in, but then there's a pump or something like that that can potentially boost the pressure to put out a fire or something. We don't want to have a situation where there's either a chemical to, to help suppress the fire or something like that, that could potentially get pushed back into our system and contaminate it. And so they put in what's called a backflow preventer or a check valve that keeps anything from coming back into the, into the city's system. It's required to have those tested, but we want to lay out in our, in our ordinance who tests them, who maintains them, who's responsible for them. And if they fail to, to do that, then we have the ability to turn off that water so that there is no potential for it to come back into our, into our system. It's basically the carrot and the stick type of thing to, to make sure that they take care of these. So this evening, we are asking the, the council to approve ordinance number, actually introduce ordinance number 18 so that we have that in place and make sure that our, our system is protected.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 18.
Second.
No need for an introduction, correct?
Correct, just a motion to introduce, no seconds required. Okay.
Ordinance Number 19, seventh series, authorize indirect sale of property, Barrett Egg Services Incorporated. Lori.
This, and it actually should be Barrett Land LLC. So ordinance 19 is the ordinance that would sell the property on the west side of 18th Street to Barrett Land LLC. At this time, we're looking for introduction of the ordinance. At our next meeting, we will actually have on the council agenda the resolution to purchase the property from the school district and then act on the ordinance selling the property to Barrett Land LLC. This legal description also encompasses all of the school district property along 18th Street, both on the north or east and west sides. We are working on getting a legal description for just the west side property and that will be included in the resolution, which is referred to in this ordinance when we adopt it. So we'll have the, the required legal when we adopt the ordinance.
What is the wish of the council? What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt.
Well, we're looking for just an introduction, you said?
Correct.
Yeah.
Cause the, yeah, the agenda says adopt.
Yes, I'm sorry, introduce.
Resolution 2019-45, declare surplus property and authorize sale thereof, streetlights, adopt. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two of our historic streetlights, the green ones that you see downtown with the Cobra overhead. They have been hit by vehicles throughout the years. Right now, they're basically sitting at one of our storage facilities outside of there, basically not being used just because of the condition they are in. We've been approached by a nonprofit, Darling Church Memorial Incorporated. They would like to be able to try to use them to light up the cemetery out by the Darling Church. And so tonight, we are asking the council to declare those two light poles surplus and then also authorize the disposal of those light poles to Darling Church Memorial Incorporated for their use.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2019-45, declare surplus property and authorize sale thereof, streetlights. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goshick, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion? Resolution, call or roll please.
Lundberg, yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goshick?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
City council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions and committees.
Mr. President, I just have a quick question on the adoption of the Barrett. Did we get that properly taken care of? Cause I was kinda interrupted and I didn't, I didn't hear the whole thing. Did we get all the motion we need?
It was just introduction of the ordinance, so yes, yes.
Sorry.
Any announcements? Then we'll adjourn our meeting at 8:08.